Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Good morning. Welcome to the January 14th, 2008 Lorraine County Board of Commissioners organizational meeting. Madam Clerk?
Today at 11 o'clock, we're going to have our Transportation Improvement District, Number 1, under resolutions, elect President of the Board for the year 2008.
I nominate Betty Blair President of 2008.
Second?
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
I could say Betty, but you'd vote no?
She didn't have a choice.
I'll go along with the majority. Elect the Vice President of the Board for the year 2008.
I nominate Commissioner Kukowski.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Adopt Robert Rolls's parliamentary procedures to be followed at all Board meetings during the year 2008.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Provide each Thursday of each month at 9:30 as regular Board meetings for the year 2008.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Provide each Thursday of each month at 9:30 as regular Board meetings for the year 2008. So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorize Commissioner Blair, Commissioner Kayla, Commissioner Kukowski, and County Administrator James Cortez to utilize county's Laura Metbysa credit card for the year 2008 in the amount not to exceed $5,000 each. Expenditures are work-related to include CCAO and NACO conferences, and for such items as food, lodging, telephone, gas, and oil, minor vehicle maintenance, and emergency repairs of county-owned or leased vehicles. So moved.
I'll second with discussion, though. Please take me off of there. I have never used any of that stuff, so it's easier to do reimbursement.
That's fine.
I never have either.
Just take me off.
But you never know.
Yep.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorize President, Vice President, and member to execute all agreements, contracts, and documents on behalf of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Appoint a Commissioners' Number 1 Review Board Chairman for the year 2008 of various members.
Do we wish to appoint that Commissioner now? He's volunteering.
I will.
Second?
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Point the President of Lorraine County Data Processing Board, Audit Review Board, Records Commission, Sulloway's Management Policy Committee, Board of Revisions, or alternate, Lorraine County Children's Families Council, or designee, and Safety Committee, or designee. So moved.
Well, don't we want to make... Is it the President?
Yes.
Okay. Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Mr. Cortez?
I do have a couple personnel issues that we need to discuss. Also, I want to talk about some litigation that we've been involved in, that we've had an outcome on.
In our favor, I saw.
Afterwards, afterwards. And potential purchase of real estate. And I got a couple other things here that I want to probably... But I'll do it under my business here, so we will need an executive session at the conclusion of a regular Board meeting.
Journal and Family Services bills? So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Investments?
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Preparations? So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Advances and repayments? There were some?
Yeah, I think there was a community development payback or something.
Yes, okay, I'll move.
Second?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Requisitions? So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorize the exemption of expenditures of $1,000 or less for prior certification requirements. So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Probate payment from Victims of Domestic Violence Fund, Lorraine County Safe Harbor, Inc., DBA Genesis House, for the amount of $31,635.33 as collected by Lorraine County for the period July 1st, 2007 through December 31st, 2007. Collection and payment pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 2303.201 and 3113.34 through 39. So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Establish compensation for law directors prosecuting violations of state law in municipal courts, Ohio Revised Code 1901.34C for the year 2008. Lorraine, Illyria, and Overland, $10,000; North Ridgeville and Amherst, $7,500; Avon Lake, Avon Sheffield Village, Sheffield Lake, $5,000; South Amherst, Wellington, $2,000; Kipton, Rochester, Grafton, Vermillion, and Grange, $1,000. So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Prive and waive the reading of the same for Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting minutes for December 17, 2007. So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Prive and enter lease agreement with Robert Taylor Agency for finished office space of approximately 2,800 square feet located in 227 Broad Street, Illyria. This is effective 12 months commencing on January 1st, 2008, for a total annual rental of $7,200, payable monthly at $600. So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorize the salary adjustments for various personnel at municipal courts reflecting county's two-fifth share effective January 1st, 2008. Lorraine bailiff Thomas Borowitz, biweekly rate of $713.20; bailiff Fred LaZanz, biweekly rate of $735.15; Illyria Judge John Munson will be the presiding administrative judge at biweekly rate of $1,769.15; Judge Lisa Lockgraves, biweekly rate of $950; Overland Sandra Cohart, clerk of courts, biweekly rate of $848.68; and Beth Rolina Bailiff, biweekly rate of $856.94; Avon Lake Melissa Dunham, clerk of courts, biweekly rate of $779.19; Mark Hagenorn, bailiff, biweekly rate of $413.88. So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Journal and Family Services, Men Resolution 94-831, adopted November 3, 1994, authorizing compensation to employees who are required to provide evening and weekend coverage for the adult protective services emergency hotline to re-supplement to their hourly rate of pay less longevity effective January 1st, 2008, so that they may reflect the dollar an hour per cap. So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under sanitary engineer, approve various change orders for Westview wastewater treatment plant abandonment project to adjust quantities from final field measurements as verified by the engineer. VIP Electric Company, Manner, and this is in the credit amount of $4,830, for breezy trucking paving, Lorraine, in the amount of $18,862.40. So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Prue change order number one to Workman Industrial Services, Inc., Kent, Ohio, in the credit amount of $25,400 for Brentwood wastewater treatment plant to adjust quantities from field... Final field measurement is verified by the engineer. So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under transit, approve and enter agreement with Vermillion Community Services Council in the amount of $15,000 as reimbursement to provide services for Vermillion Brown Helm Township, Lorraine Community Health Partners, and Cleveland Clinic for Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, effective January 1st, 2008 through December 31st, 2008. So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the auditor, authorize a refund to Old Republic Title Company, Northern Ohio LLC, Illyria, in the amount of $599.60 for an incorrect conveyance fee. This refund is due to the City of Lorraine being a tax-exempt entity. So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the engineer, certify the annual county highway system mileage in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section 4501.04 for 2007. Mileage for 2006 was 269.66 miles. Is that what we're certifying? Yes. So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
I have a question. Isn't that supposed to be like how much you get reimbursed for your mileage? That's not what this is?
No, this is county road miles.
Oh, okay, never mind, thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorize the posting of low limit signs that state weight limit reduction by 25% of various county roads for the thaw and moisture period in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 5577.07, effective February 1st, 2008 through May 1st, 2008. So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
War contract to Lake Erie Construction Norwalk in the amount of $172,675 for the guardrail replacement project Phase 3. Two bids were received, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Issue notice to proceed on before March 1st, 2008 to be completed on before April 15th, and this project is 100% federally funded. So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Approve and enter in contract with Bramhall Engineering Services, Avon, in the amount of $24,500 to provide engineering services for a proposed spur road connecting Lorraine County Regional Airport to Route 20. Funding was approved by Transportation Improvement District Budget Resolution 2007-002 on December 6, 2007. So moved.
Second?
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Carney, there was a lot of conversation last week with the press. You want to come up here and talk about this road for a couple minutes, so they know what's going on, especially in light of hearing Huron County talking about closing the Huron County Airport and opening a new one? Our first guest this year.
First of the year. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Ken.
I'm more than happy to ask, answer any questions you have. I have a scope of services, what this job entails. Would you like to have that explained?
Yeah, just sort of give an overview of what the plans are and where it's going to connect and...
Well, the overview, I'll get into particular scope of services after that, but I'll be more than happy to. This is a... This is a proposed connection from actually the airport to the interstate highway system, which is what I used to call relocated 10 or an extension of I-480. There's two to three different concepts of where to connect to, and that is part of the study. The cost is... We do have some preliminary ideas on what it would cost because of the length and because of our history on what per mile we have available to us, and our history of costs incurred with this type of construction. It'd be full... It'd be concrete, curb and gutter, full storm sewer. It's very attractive for that particular reason. Rushed road is a major arterial, obviously interstate's interstate. The spur would go directly into the front door of the airport. The scope of services, the $24,500, is basically preliminary concept of scope of the preparing a ground control survey consisting of horizontal and vertical control sufficient to establish the alignment and the... Provide the rough stakes in the field, the actual surveying for a visualization of the proposed alignment with the public right-ofways, and we will not stake on private properties without their permission, but the majority of the people would like to know the circumstances of any temporary easements or even permanent. Prepare the preliminary plan and profiles of the proposed roadway. It was at the vertical view and a horizontal view as it's sliced, so that's what we call profile. And we'll utilize the aerial photography and topographic contours as available from our office, County Engineers' Office. Prepare preliminary engineer's opinion of the probable construction cost, and prepare the property map and table listing of affected properties, and prepare exhibit noting the wetlands areas within the right-ofway, if any, the roadway corridor is identified on the wetland inventory map. Thus, the three options, minimize wetland disturbances, and those are three alignments, I should say, instead of options. What I'm referring to is three alignments. Looking to connect, minimum cost, high quality, concrete, curb and gutter, Colorado Avenue, deja vu. That's... I hope that...
Yeah, just an overview, what we're looking at, so they know it's a study to see where the best place to put this road would be.
It's a preliminary, $24,500. After this, we'll determine whether we want to pursue, if there's any disturbances that are unbelievably difficult, and at that time, we'll seek requests for professional services for the contract itself, meaning the construction.
How long is this going to take?
Depending on the funding sources, if we do bond, it'd be...
No, I mean the Bramhall, just Bramhall itself, the proposed study, how long is that going to take time-wise, or will it come back with anything?
Oh, less than 90 days. I'd say 90, 90 days, weather conditions permitting. We would have liked to get them out, get the survey crews out a little earlier, but surveyors are tough individuals. They'll be out there as soon as this is signed. They're waiting to go.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just want to point out that it's not coming out of the general fund for this study. It's Transportation Improvement District money.
Absolutely. No general fund is to be utilized for this purpose, and hopefully in the future, for the construction of the actual request for professional services. This is your Transportation Improvement District, and I appreciate you approving that. It's money well spent.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ken. See you at 11 o'clock for our next one.
Thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Under the sheriff, receive, file, and forgive the unpaid fees from juvenile court for Lorraine County Sheriff's Office for the year 2007 in the amount of $64,836.8. So moved.
Second?
Discussion?
Yeah, I just, I don't know, does Sheriff have any idea if this is the normal amount of money that we have to forgive? And if it is, have we ever thought about going, using a company to go after that money, a collection agency?
Thank you, Lieutenant Davis. I think you get this question same time every year, don't you, Sheriff?
It seems like a lot of money that we're giving up.
Yeah, this question comes up every year, and basically, I think the juvenile fines are supposed to be collected by the juvenile court, but these are probably indigent cases, just wait till you see the next figure.
I saw it.
Yeah. And basically, that's from the beginning of my term in 2001 until now, those funds have accumulated that long, and once again, a lot of it's indigent people, criminal cases, and I believe the clerk's office is supposed to collect those fees.
Correct.
Lieutenant Davis is here from the civil office, and he's the one that actually compiles this annual report of the year. And I know that this question does get asked every year, but once again, I guess, can you get blood from a turnip type thing? You know, it'll probably cost you more to try to go out to collect these fees, and you probably won't even collect them. I mean, that's... I'll let the lieutenant talk a little bit on that.
All the documents that are issued to us, okay, we don't have a choice for the State of Ohio. We have to go out and process and attempt service on them. The fees are regulated by the Ohio Revised Code. We take in anything that's paid to us, we put toward them from the clerk's office. Typical subpoenas, I'd say, for Illyria is $6, $1.50 for mileage, $7.50 for a criminal. If we don't get it, then you're going to pay probably more to try and get that back in the long run than the $7.50 is worth. It depends on the document and how many, but 70% of the criminal fees make up the deficit on that.
There aren't collection agencies out there that would, like, just take a percentage of what they do collect, so we're not paying anything out of pocket?
It's possible, but then again, we don't collect the fees, you know?
Clerk of courts.
I think the State of Ohio actually has it where the clerk's office actually collects the fees, and then whatever they collect, then they pay off to whoever is owed money on that.
Okay. I'm sure you're doing the best you can with what you have, but I'd like to see some of these fees collected if we can.
Yeah, again, we don't... We don't know who the addresses, like, the defendants. We have the defendant name, but that's it. We don't have their address or anything like that. And since the clerk does all the billing, we can't do the billing, because that'd be like double billing.
Right.
You know, so we don't know who to go after. And then you gotta, I guess, establish whether or not the case has been finished, you know, how much they owe, and then go from there. It's not impossible, but then again, you have to make a determination on, you know, how much effort you want to put on each one, and, you know, whether or not you can get it back.
Okay. So we need to talk to Ron Nabikowski, not you.
Yeah, I hate to put it on their burden, but I know that they're doing the best they can.
Right.
But like I said, 70% criminal cases, and they're probably indigent, or in jail, or not going to respond, and for, you know, some of them, they're $7.50, you know, how much are you going to be willing to spend to try and get that one subpoena money back? Some are a little bit more, some are a little bit less, but then again, you gotta go through and sort out which ones you can actually collect.
Madam Commissioner, I ask a question, please.
Sure.
Do we have to forgive them, or can we just leave them sit there in case someday somebody comes along and wants to do a collection on them? I don't know if... Does the code require us to close them out?
Are you talking about the juvenile fees?
Yes, sir.
Now, I think on the juvenile fees, you know, they'd gotten a prosecutor's opinion where we actually couldn't collect those, and that's why they were forgiven each year.
I'm not familiar with that one.
Because it's... Because it involves the juveniles?
Right.
Okay. Now, the rest of them, you know, that's all open, you know, the rest of them are there. But because of the fact that it deals with the juvenile court system, you know, they weren't able to go out and do that, because it deals with juveniles.
Right, but is somebody responsible for juveniles, or there would be an adult court?
Possibly, but I'm just going by, you know, the past history of what, you know, we had in place.
Right. I was just wondering, because if we left them uncollected but journalized them, because I guess you gotta make an annual journal entry.
And that's possible, too. They could just... They can sit and they can go uncollected, and what will happen is when a new sheriff, you know, comes into office in the future, all the fees according to Ohio Revised Code get set back to zero. You know, because when former Sheriff Mahoney was there, you know, his went up there, and then when Sheriff Stemedi took office, all the fees go back to zero, and then they're cumulative from that point on.
We're not letting you leave, Phil, until you get us some money.
We can do it the other way, too. It's... And we can leave them on the books.
I don't know what the best course of action. I know we do have this discussion every year, and...
Yeah.
We've made overtures occasionally to collection agencies. The National Association of Counties has a program that they've put out there, and I've talked to them before, but we've never been more than just on the surface exploratory with that. Maybe it's just time to take a deeper look at that. We've done well with their prescription drug program through that organization. I did give that information to Kenny Burkhardt about a year ago to take a look at, because I think he works on that in the clerk of courts office over there, and I know that he seemed interested at times, so I may have to have some further dialogue with him.
I know with respect to that, the clerk's office did, as far as the adult cases are concerned, did implement a process for reducing unpaid court costs and things to judgment so that there is a record that carries it on. I don't know, because of all the foreclosure things and the things that have taken up the clerk's time, whether they've been able to continue that through the year, but I know generally around this time, the beginning of the year, they do go through their cases, get a judgment, and then there are various things that they can implement through that, like when somebody comes in and reports for probation or something, they do make some like when somebody comes in and reports for probation or something, they do make some kind of effort to say, by the way, you owe us this.
So do we want to give some direction as how we would like to proceed with this, other than just discuss it every year? Discussion is healthy, but do we want to do something else? I noticed on the agenda, subsequent to your remarks, that the one item says for the juveniles, receive, file, and forgive. For the others, it just says receive and file. It doesn't say anything about forgiving.
Right, they're not. The, the, the other portion, you know, it stays on the books until a new sheriff is elected, you know, and/or... Because some cases, they still collect on, and we get fees that are, you know, years old, you know? Some of the cases take that long to actually finish up, you know, and then we get paid on.
I, I just think that, I, I find that a little troublesome just because with all due respect, that there would be a new sheriff, and so that this would go away. This is an obligation on somebody's part.
I know, but that's the way the Ohio Revised Code reads it, and that's a legislative issue.
Then they ought to change their legislation. They're not doing us any favors again down in Columbus.
Imagine that.
They imagine that. Well. A direction, does the board wish to give some direction?
I'm assuming based on what we were told, there's no collecting on the juvenile, correct?
Correct. We haven't done it for years according to what we were told, and, you know, because we could leave it on the books, but it would just sit there, and it would just accumulate. We, we get paid very little. I, I think if you, if you look at it, I mean, we, we got paid a very minimal amount. I mean, some people do pay, you know, but most of the fees are actually unpaid each year for juvenile.
And then going to item thirty-three to just receive and file, nothing's forgiven, so those can be paid back.
Yes. And then some of those cases take years to resolve, you know?
Sure.
Between probate, civil, criminal, things like that, and then, you know, whatever is paid to the clerk's office, they pay to us, and we apply toward that balance.
Jerry, can you get us some information on why we have to forgive this, and we can just hold this till next week? It doesn't matter, does it, Sheriff, if we forgive it this week or next week?
I think I just, by law, have to file the report.
Okay. Can we find out, put this for next week on number thirty-two? That all right, Commissioner?
Mm-hmm.
And we'll find out why we have to forgive? Thank you.
I think there was a motion.
I'll let you know, too, we have had discussion with the clerk Nabikowski and Kenny Burkhardt on this also about possibly trying to collect some of these. It really hasn't gotten anywhere. If you'd like, I can recontact him again to...
I think that would be an excellent idea. My calculations, if we would get just ten cents on the dollar from that money that's outstanding, that'd be hundred and ten thousand dollars, and that would be enough to help with at least one employee, almost maybe two if it's, it's lower scale.
I think that's issue number thirty-three, Commissioner.
I did, that's what I was looking at.
Oh, issue number thirty-two, though.
And I don't disagree with you on that.
And thirty-two would help, so I think you had a motion. I do have a motion. And I made the motion, so I will throw the motion. Okay? So you filed it, we're going to look at it, how's that?
Sounds good, Commissioners.
Thank you for your comments, and if you have any further discussion to offer us on this, will you let us know?
Sure.
Thank you. Then number thirty-three, you're just going to receive and file it, right?
Correct.
One million eighty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-one cents.
I'll second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Krade, County Minister.
The modifiable request for the executive session, also want to talk about some of our ongoing labor negotiations. Nothing serious there, but, but I want to update you on a matter there. So that's just an addition, and we've been busy. The board hasn't met, but obviously the operation keeps going on, so hopefully we're going to produce a year that exceeds last year. But I want to be optimistic. I don't want to be the guy that says we're going to win the game only to lose because we had such a great year last year. But we are making plans within the departments to, to try to have an equally good year for the citizens of Lorraine County. That concludes my remarks, thank you.
Mr. Ennis, this is County Prosecutor.
Commissioners, I do have one matter of imminent litigation that I would like to discuss with the Commissioners in executive session.
Commissioners' report. Commissioner Laurie?
I just want to say yesterday after church, we stopped at the Rosewood Cafe down at Lakeview Park. And if, have you been there for the brunch yet?
No, yesterday was the first day.
Oh, it was really good, so I, I urge anybody that wants a nice view and a nice brunch to, to head down to Lakeview. I think it's ten to two on Sunday. Been off for a long, long time, so lots, lots happened. I can't really think of anything really exciting to talk about, but hopefully everybody had a good Christmas and a, and a good New Year. I know I did, so that's all I have.
Commissioner Kayla?
We're back.
Yeah, we're back.
Busy Christmas season, all the swearing ins, again, congratulations to Mayor Kraschenko, Mayor Hunter, Mayor Puskur, and all their new staffs. Welcome the best, and then they had the Howard Muni Court, Judge John Howard Muni Court, grand opening, wonderful facility. They've done a great job over there, everyone seems very happy. And then I actually saw some of your friends, I was at the Erie Shores Humane Society paprikash dinner the other night. They actually were so busy, they oversold the place, ran out of food. But there was a whole table of red hat ladies, crimson crones, they were called. I wonder if you're familiar with the term? But I got to talk to a lot of red hat ladies, so it's a nice event, I was amazed. They, they had two hundred dinners, they were sold out, six-thirty event, it was supposed to last until seven-thirty. Nick Hutlock and his wife were there, the new trustee at Community College. They couldn't get any food, it was unbelievable, place was packed, so.
Oh, Nick is, I did not know that.
Now, Nick, his wife Maria.
Really? Who is she replacing?
Uh, it's governor's appointments. There were two of them.
One of the Republicans.
I just wondered who.
Yeah, Lee Colson and Mr. Hutlock is the new trustees. End of my report, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Well, I just have, since Ted usually gives us a, a little food for thought, I'll give you as my report a food for thought. The basic principle, the basic principle is that you don't make decisions because they are easy. You don't make them because they are cheap. You don't make them because they are popular. You make them because they are right. And that's my report.
Ma'am. Next Commissioners' Board meeting will be Thursday, January twenty-fourth at nine-thirty, and the travel reimbursement for the year two thousand and eight in accordance with the IRS will be fifty point five cents.
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment.
David, you get the first shot for the new year.
Morning Commissioners, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Morning, David.
We in Oberlin are looking forward to a good year in, in many respects. This is the hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of the founding of both the town and the college.
Oh, wow.
And there are events planned for it. I do hope, however, that you will put on your calendars immediately, not only Juneteenth, which will be Saturday, the fourteenth of June or something, I think it's the fourteenth, but also Saturday, September thirteenth, which is the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the rescue of John Price, largely by Oberlin citizens, but also supported by Wellington citizens and a mob, actually, outside a hotel in Wellington from slave catchers who were trying to enforce the fugitive slave law and citizens of Oberlin trying to continue their resistance to it. So there will be a lot going on in Oberlin that day.
And the date again, David?
September thirteenth.
Thank you.
That is exactly the hundred and fiftieth anniversary, it was September thirteenth, eighteen fifty-eight. So I know there will be much more coming on this and a lot of involvement with the Lorraine County Visitors Bureau and Wellington and Wellington Township as well. But I know, political Caesarino, that is going to be a long day of observances and various programs in Oberlin, so I hope you'll all be down for that, and I hope other people from the county will be down for that. Besides that, I have two questions about today's, or, or one comment about today's agenda and one question. The comment is on correspondence item number four. Just to add that this item in the, in the listing gives more information than I knew about what the modification to the solid waste permit is, but the, there's a piece of information that this, at least in its summary, does not give you, and that is that there is a public hearing on this matter. A, a, a public hearing held by the Ohio EPA about this permit to install that will be taking place on the twenty-third of January at seven o'clock at Oberlin High School. And just because it's a permit to install, and we have a lot of people who are interested in the allied waste facility, even though it's, it's overall a private operation, I, I just thought I'd add that to the record here, that there is going to be a public hearing on that, and that's when it takes place. And my question is about item twenty, which indicates approval of the minutes for Board of Commissioners meeting for December seventeenth. I was not here on December twentieth, I was out of town, but I was wondering if there was a meeting on December seventeenth.
No, it's the wrong date, David.
And, okay, so that is...
Those are the childcare provider payments.
Oh.
That gym signs, but we still approve.
Okay.
We approved his doing that.
Okay.
Okay.
So that was the nature of the meeting on the seventeenth. Thank you.
There was no actual meeting, it's still minutes of approving childcare provider payments.
We thought we caught her making a mistake, and she didn't.
Actually, I thought we caught you in a public meeting fiasco, but apparently not that.
Thanks, David. I expect nothing but the best from you, thanks.
She wouldn't let us.
Welcome back. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, oh, come on down, Ken.
And just as a note, in the thing that David talked about on that BFI, there is nothing regards to a public hearing in this.
So that's... The notice that we received, so thank you for filling us in on that.
Morning again, Commissioners. Since this is just a short meeting, I wanted to bring your attention to number ninety, number twenty-one on your board agenda. ODOT has informed my office that the school travel plan for the Durling and Vincent schools for the Clearview School District has been selected for funding through the Safe Routes to School Program. That's the first one, I think, probably in the state. The Engineers' Office has been jointly working with ODOT on the safety program for the past year, and the school travel plan is required. The selection of these two schools will be included in a final project scope with ODOT's representatives. The project scope is necessary to establish the final project, and estimates of program milestone dates is also being developed. The advantage, obviously, is that these consultants will be paid directly by ODOT. This is a dovetail with that safety, the Safety Star program that we initiated, and so I'm happy to say the results are in, it's working, and Donna Spansky helps me tremendously on that, my administrative assistant.
And I have seen that on the college channel periodically, and that's, it's very well received according to what I see on television.
Fantastic program.
Congratulations.
They're calling daily to bring a, a, a repeat of that. Once we meet, the K's turn into ones, and ones turn into twos, so if we're lucky, we'll have an advantage to, or an opportunity to visit each child, each child four times. In addition, I'd like to add, we just started the program as early as late May of last year, and just last year totals over six thousand young children has, has seen the program. K to four, six thousand.
Wonderful.
So we're quite proud of that, and...
You have great props in that.
Pardon me?
Great props.
Is it? It's just fantastic, you know?
Yeah, it's really nice.
And it's nice to go. I, I, my invitation to, is to you, if you'd like to visit the program. We deliver that program to the schools, they don't come to us, we deliver it to them. And we have a little, have the props and the railroad ding ding dings, and all the kids love it, and they pay attention, and they see Asamo and all the electronics that we have available in terms of the video.
And auto to auto?
Yes, auto to auto. Yes. And it's only forty-five minutes, and the school gives us a nice little area to do that for us, and we just roll in, and we roll out, and there's been instances where we do three schools in one day. So we're kind of proud of it, and more proud of the fact that monies are coming in through ODOT for constructing something concrete, and I mean concrete, like sidewalks in front of the schools along our road systems, so.